Seniors. A lot of young people just don't really, you know, they get jaded, but seniors, we have our little seniors here.
I am too.
Most of these people are just seniors.
There's nobody here also?
No. We were out, what, thirty minutes, twenty-four minutes out?
Really nice. There was nothing on the agenda other than noxious weeds or whatever, so. I know I've been down, I went down in there today except the day off and I didn't see any of them, but also there was snow on the ground, so I could have missed them.
You know what'll eat noxious weeds?
Goats.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
They love them. I even know a guy that takes the willows, you know, the willows and cuts them in the fall and rolls them up in the veil and he feeds them like hay to the goats over the winter. They love this.
High-fire the guy.
Yeah.
The only planning commission meeting you've ever had super full was when my dad's subversion came along. Standing room only. Uh, the final phase of the clover meadows with all the multifamily units and everything.
No worries. How are you?
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
How are you?
Going up.
It's her daughter has goats.
Oh, yeah.
I think the boundaries are so weird for Bayfield. She might be in the county. She's.
Yeah, we have all those weird little enclaves. And we got some just right up here off the parkway that's county, county.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, uh, yeah, Tade was, uh, Tade was in my grade. Yep. And then I think his little sister was in my little brother's grade. But we did, we had a lot of fun.
Try this one.
All right, this one clearly is better. Thank you. All right, Dustin, are we live? All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. It's especially, I especially appreciate it because I'm guessing some of you either had to eat really early, give up dinner completely, or are gonna go home and have a bowl of cereal when we're done. So, thank you for coming. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to welcome you to this candidate forum. My name is Lori Mininger. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters for La Plata County, and the league is engaged throughout La Plata County, not just in Durango, contrary to some myth. We do have members of the league who do live in Bayfield and in the area around Bayfield. Some of, um, we have volunteers from the league here this evening, including folks you met coming in, um, and folks, our moderator, our timer, and so on. So, thank you guys for coming and helping tonight. Appreciate that. The league begins its meetings with a land acknowledgement, which we will do. So, we'd like to recognize that the lands upon which we are meeting, living and working, and where we play are the ancestral lands of the Yute people and the communal and ceremonial spaces of the Apache, the Pueblos of New Mexico, the Hopi, and the Dinay Nations. The League of Women Voters believes it is important to acknowledge and recognize the original land stewards who continue to inhabit and connect with this land in southwest Colorado. Thank you for your attention and respect in acknowledging this important legacy. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, and to be clear, we do not endorse or oppose any candidates or political parties. For a hundred and four years, our mission has been to educate and inform voters to increase their participation in government. And we continue that mission to this day, including events like tonight's candidate forum. So, I want to say a special thank you to our host, the town of Bayfield, and in particular to the town clerk, Dustin Hayden. So, thank you, Dustin. And thank you to our candidates, and I apologize for having my back to you, who have taken the time to be here this evening so that we have a chance to meet you, hear from you, your views, and your vision for Bayfield. So, this evening's forum is a hybrid event, and we're so happy that so many of you were able to come in person. Thank you for that. We are also recording the event, and we're live on Zoom, is that true? And YouTube, right? So, I don't know how many people are watching us there, but I trust that some are. Because we're recording the event, those who might not have been able to catch us live this evening, we're able to watch on demand, and that will be posted up either on the town of Bayfield's website and the league's website as soon as we have that available to do so. For the audience here in this room and online, and to encourage civil discourse and to allow for high-quality broadcast feed, we're gonna ask you all to comply with a few rules. Please behave respectfully toward the candidates and fellow attendees. Please refrain from interacting directly with the candidates and each other during the forum so that all of the audience members and our candidates will have the opportunity to feel safe and to, that we can hear from everyone. We've collected some questions in advance, and thank you for the questions that have already been submitted this evening. We'll continue to collect those. So, you should have received a card or cards when you came in. If you have questions that have not yet been submitted, please raise your hand, and one of our league members will come around and collect those for you. Ones that we've collected already have gone to our moderator, and we'll continue to do that. Please turn off or mute your cellphone. And please don't tweet, or text, or take phone calls. If there's an emergency, we'll just ask you to kindly step outside and handle that. And I see that no one's worn campaign materials, so thank you for that. And we know just in terms of being courteous, we're not gonna shout, cheer, or jeer, and please, no flash photography. Right, as I mentioned, we'll be using questions that we've received in advance from Bayfield residents and those that you are submitting. So, as I said, we'll continue to take those, so please feel free if something comes up. Okay, so let's get started. You all probably know that Bayfield is governed by a board of six trustees and a mayor. The town board is the governing and legislative body for the town and is responsible for adopting laws, ordinances, and resolutions as deemed necessary. According to Colorado law, the legislative and corporate authority of statutory towns, such as Bayfield, is vested in the board of trustees and the mayor. The mayor and members of the board of trustees are elected from the town at large. The mayor presides over the board of trustees' meetings and has the same voting powers as other board members and can break a tie. The board of trustees is supported by the town manager and the town clerk and treasurer. So, tonight's forum is a forum. It's not a debate, but it's an opportunity for all of us to hear directly from the candidates for the following offices: Bayfield Town Trustee and the mayor. So, the candidates are as follows. For trustee, there are four open seats, and the candidates are David Black, Kat Katzos, Laura McLaren, Matthew Nyberg, and Cash De Snooks. And how your election works, and probably you already know this, is that the three candidates with the most votes will be sworn into a four-year term, and the fourth-ranked candidate will be sworn in for a two-year term. Did I get that right?
Yay.
All right. For mayor, there are two candidates for one position, and those candidates are Tom Ow and Ashley Tarkenton. And the term for the office of mayor is four years. So, again, I welcome all of our candidates to tonight's forum, and thank you for your participation. Our moderator tonight is Lee Meggs. Lee has been a resident of La Plata County since 1986. She is a League of Women Voters member and is a past member of our Board of Directors. In her thirty-year professional career, she has practiced law and clinical social work and has served as a magistrate. Lee is also a former mayor of the city of Durango. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. The goal of tonight's forum is to present the views of the candidates seeking one of the four trustee positions as well as the office of mayor in the upcoming town council election. The forum is designed to be a fair, nonpartisan setting so that you, the voter, can make an informed decision about your elected officials. We will start with questions that are submitted in advance from some Bayfield residents, and we will also ask questions submitted by the audience members in attendance tonight. We trust that the questions will represent the diversity of citizens' concerns and perspectives. None of the candidates have been given the questions in advance. This ensures that voters know that the candidates are, that they may, that voters may evaluate the candidates' grasp of issues that are important to this community. I encourage you to listen carefully to the candidates' responses. Did they answer the question? Does their response indicate an understanding of the issue? Do they have ideas for how they can work to address the problems facing Bayfield? The format. Tonight's format will begin with two-minute opening remarks by each candidate, followed by questions that will have a sixty-second response time. After the questions have been answered by the candidates, they will then present two-minute closing remarks. Each candidate will do so, which ends the forum. Prior to tonight's forum, the ground rules were distributed to the candidates, and they agreed to follow them. This is a forum and not a debate, which means that all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer each question. With that in mind, I remind the candidates to direct their answers to me and the audience and not to each other, in the spirit of productive civil discourse, and to advance the voters' understanding of your views. And candidates, please keep your eye on the timer sitting there in front of you. The timer will keep you informed of your time remaining. Should you go over the time allowed, I will interrupt and move, ask you to move, ask to move on to the next speaker or question. So, now we will begin the opening statements from the candidates in the order of the ballot. And we are going to begin with you, Ashley.
Hi, I apologize. I am fighting off a cold. I hope my voice projects out there, but for those of you that don't know me, I'm Ashley Tarkenton. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I graduated from Fort Lewis a million years ago with a degree in exercise science. I went on to attend Cal State Long Beach in California for my graduate studies in sports medicine. I returned to Bayfield twenty-three years ago to buy the establishment that I put myself through college and grad school working at, which had nothing to do with my degree. But don't worry, I still, I still kinda use my degree of some sorts. You can find me sometimes teaching classes at the gym, and I still work with high-risk individuals to design exercise programs around their medical issues. I have been the mayor of Bayfield for the past four years, and prior to that, I was on the board of trustees for two years. I currently sit on the board of Region Nine as well as the executive committee for Region Nine. I also sit on the executive board of the La Plata County Economic Alliance. I am on the board for the Bayfield Chamber of Commerce, and I have previously sat on the board of directors for the Pine River Library. I don't have much of a life because I work a lot and I attend a lot of meetings, but when I can, I sneak off to play golf. I like to cook or just hang out with my family. As I have previously mentioned, I'm a small business owner in this community, and I am very committed to the economic viability of Bayfield. I have to say that I've done a lot of cool things in my life, but the coolest thing I've ever done was get to be your mayor for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Laura, we'll hear from you.
All right, my name's Laura McLaren. I live on thirty-two West North Street here in Bayfield. I've lived here almost exactly four years now, and I'm from the East Coast. It's a lot different out here, and I have never thought I'd live in a town. I thought I'd always have a piece of property, but I couldn't do that, and I just love Bayfield. I love the atmosphere of it. I like its rural nature, very interested in farming and sustainable agriculture and supporting small towns. My, uh, some of my priorities, if I'm lucky enough to be elected to the board, is to encourage local businesses, more local businesses. I'd really like to encourage some more agricultural type of adventures for us and as ways to make, and as ways to make some more revenue. One is I'd like to see us develop the Heritage Farm, that used to be called the Harrison Farm, where it's right in town, into an educational facility and to use it for drawing people in. I'd like to see some other businesses, maybe as butcher, butchers, or some other agriculturally-based businesses for us to get some revenue. It's not a totally popular opinion here, I understand, but I think a marijuana dispensary here would bring in some good revenue. A lot of people have to drive to Durango all the time. I know that's not too popular, but it does bring some money in, and it is agricultural, actually. Better for you than the booze, but anyway, those are my, my main priorities. I also do a lot of work with Pine River Shares, and we've just purchased a ten-acre farm right in Gem Village, which is gonna be a really, really cool resource for this town of Bayfield for educational opportunities and all the other things that I think this town would enjoy.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew, would you like to begin?
First off, I'd like to thank for everyone coming. My name is Matthew Nyberg. I've lived in Bayfield since 2004. I've been on the board of trustees from 2012 to 2020 and am currently on the planning commission as the chair. I, my background is in social work. I did a lot of work with child protection, adult protection, and so the seniors are some of the best advocates that I wanna go for. You know, I do have a family. I live up in Dove Ranch. They currently attend the Bayfield School District, and I would like for the town to continue to work well with the school district with upcoming projects and being transparent with them as well. And so, I just look forward to, you know, working and getting the collaboration together with not only the town and the school district and moving forward from that. So, I appreciate everyone for coming, and thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. We'll hear from you, Cash.
Hi, I'm Cash Snooks. As you can tell, I'm the youngest one running here tonight. I was born and raised here in Bayfield, and I'm really just wanting to be on this board of trustees to see the town of Bayfield grow in a good way, where we hold on to our community and have that small-town feel, but also bring in resources and amenities to have more teachers and more affordable housing and everything like that. Like I said, I've lived here my whole life. I left for a few years to go to school and pursue the business degree. I came back and I have since started working with my dad again and developing a few properties here in town and construction on new builds and everything like that. That's about all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Cash. David, we'll hear from you now.
Good evening. I would really like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this.
Feel free to take a pause. Feel free to take a pause, David. We'll let her get started, ready for you.
Thank you.
Are you all set? Great. Thank you, David. Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening. My name is David Black. I've lived here since 1994. However, I am a lifelong resident of La Plata County. My father came here initially in 1949. I had the highest compliment the other day when our past successor called me Dan. And to still be called my father's name after all of these years is about as high an honor as you could ever have. I'm a graduate of the University of Northern Colorado. My degree's in industrial arts education. I also attended Fort Lewis College for three years. While I was at Fort Lewis, I was a political science major. I served as a legislative intern. The time I served as a legislative intern, I was an intern for the chair of the Judiciary Committee. I'm a graduate of Leadership La Plata. I'm a past member of the La Plata County Planning Commission. I've been the chairman of the Board of Adjustment for La Plata County. I'm a past member of the town board here. I have plenty of experience to address the issues that come before the board and would look forward to the support of the people that would like to see me on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And next, we'll hear from someone who's going to speak for Kat Katzos.
I think you can speak loud enough. If no one can hear me, just raise up. Good evening, friends and neighbors, and thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this public forum. I'm sorry I could not attend this evening forum. I was looking forward to this opportunity to introduce myself to you. I've lived in Bayfield since 2010 with my husband, and I own a bookkeeping business. I became interested in the town of Bayfield's operations in 2021 when I heard there were several new developments in the works. I wanted to learn about the projects, their size, location, and impacts on the existing property owners. I began tending to town meetings regularly and then volunteered to sit on the committee to update the town of Bayfield's comprehensive plan. If you're unfamiliar with the comp plan, I encourage you to go to the town website and review the plan. Through that experience, I grew a desire to serve our community, and that is why I'm running for town trustee. My work history includes administrative assistant to county director, planning tech with the voting planning department, and activities director for the county's, uh, for the county's senior center, and administrative assistant for file department. These experiences educated me on the operations of each department, the integral support systems of the government entities, and the necessity for these departments to continually consider their community and what best supports and meets the public needs. As your town trustee, I would welcome and look forward to your concerns, comments, and suggestions, and I commit to putting what is best for the town before any personal agenda or agenda of any outside entity wishing to develop or establish within our community. It is important to always consider the broader impacts and new development or business may have on our existing community. And that is not to say I'm anti-growth. Quite the contrary. If growth is good for our town's resiliency, sustainability, and does not diminish our current infrastructure, I'm in support of smart growth. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for allowing me to share my thoughts and commitment with you. If you would like to meet with me in person, I will be at Bayfield Library on Thursday, March 21st between 11:00 and 2:00 p.m. for a meet and greet. Thank you, Kat Katzos.
Thank you very much for presenting that on behalf of a candidate who could not be here this evening. Each candidate will now be asked the same question, and we'll have sixty seconds each to respond. We will alternate among the candidates as we go through various questions. Beginning now with Ashley, this is a question that we received in advance from someone in the community, and the question is this follows: "In your opinion, what are the two greatest, most important issues the town of Bayfield will face over the next four years, and how will you address them?"
Right now, I mean, I sit at the table at a lot of places, and I'll tell you right now, affordable housing is up there with one of the most, the biggest concerns, and sustainable growth is, is the next one. People, people wanna see growth in this town. They wanna see businesses move here, but I think we have to solve the problem of where are the people going to live that work at these businesses? So, I think we put a lot of things in place to address the affordable housing issue, and I think after that, once we can get people into the town, then I think the business sector will grow from that.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I think that, yes, affordable housing is important, but I think that sort of directed growth is important for this town of Bayfield, to maintain our, our rural character and things like that, support local businesses. I don't think that a $400,000 house is affordable housing. I, I know that housing is a true challenge nowadays, especially, especially with construction costs and everything else going on. I would like us to look into some other avenues of maybe getting some financing. I've seen some areas where health centers and other, or church organizations will buy property and provide housing for other groups, or different levels of income. I think it's, it's good. I don't want to, I really don't wanna see Bayfield become a bedroom community for people to commute to Durango and commute to Peony, um, Pagosa. I want us to be, have people, housing that people can buy and support with working and doing businesses here in this general area.
Right, that's time.
Timing was good.
We're going to pause one minute, is that what you're requesting? Yes. No problem. A little technology pause. We can speak amongst, amongst ourselves. So, we're receiving some more questions from our audience here, and we'll be reviewing those and see where we can fit some of these in. I sure do appreciate the nice way that candidates are watching that time. Sometimes it's hard to speak and watch the time all at once, and we only give each other about three seconds of grace, though, on that. Y'all set? All right, we're ready to go now. Same question. Matthew, you may respond to that question.
Thank you. So, we do have a lot of developments going in, a lot of rooftops, but what I would really encourage is a lot more business because we need that sales tax to maintain our budget. And so, to maybe give businesses some sort of incentive to come to Bayfield and not only employ Bayfield residents, but to help with the sales tax revenue because we're always in a budget shortfall, and we rely on that sales tax. So, I'm really looking at, hoping that new businesses will look at Bayfield and move towards this, and if so, if we can accommodate them, however, to help, you know, growth in a positive way. So, that's what I'd have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash, it's your opportunity.
Well, we're gonna face a lot of big issues in the next four years, just with the changing of the times and what's coming down the pipeline towards us and everything like that, but I'd say probably the biggest one I would look at is amenities that would draw in workforce, as in teachers and firefighters and stuff like that, and what goes hand in hand with that is that affordable housing. But you have to look at the growth, and I want the town to grow. We need to, like you said, for our budget and everything like that, but I don't want it to grow extremely fast where we lose the opportunity of having the small-town community feel where our residents and community members are connected and can help each other out.
Thank you, Cash. David?
Without a doubt, housing is the issue that's. Without a doubt, housing is the issue that's probably at top of mind of everybody here. Affordable housing isn't four hundred thousand dollar homes, and that's, so that's a real challenge. But I also believe that the other thing that we have here is tax leakage. And what that is, is people shopping in Durango, and that goes to not having proper places to shop out here. And if we had a first-tier grocery store, I think probably ought to be what we're, what we should be pursuing at the outset if we can. That's not to say that Paul doesn't do a fine job, because he does. But a first-tier grocery store would go a long ways towards really helping with the tax collections. Also, to what Laura said, we definitely should give cannabis sales another looksee.
Thank you. So you've all pointed to many issues respecting the town of Bayfield, and this question, the next question goes directly to Laura. And Laura, the question is, if elected, how do you plan to effectively balance your responsibility as a leader of the community with any other commitments or obligations that you may have?
Well, I have, I have, soon as I moved here, I tried to become involved in the community. I tried to find a nonprofit to involve myself, which was Pine River Shares, and I worked with them. I also work with the Good Food Collective in Durango. I have some connections there. I'm not working, I do work part-time at the homeless shelter in Durango, but I have time. The main thing that I'm looking for is something that I can devote myself to and make a difference. I keep casting around trying to find my place in this community. I come from a well-established community, very involved in my community, and I just need a place to focus, but I've got the time to do it, for sure.
Thank you, Lauren. Next, Matthew?
Same question?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Happy to do that. This is a question from, I'm just trying to find, it is from this audience, and I set the question aside. Okay. If elected, how do you plan to effectively balance your responsibilities as a leader of the community with any other commitments or obligations that you may have?
I feel with my current position as a, I work for an adoption agency, and I also substitute for the school district. I feel that I can manage my time effectively to also maintain a high level of listening to my constituents on current issues that they're experiencing and able to bring that to the board's attention and move forward in a positive way.
Thank you very much. Cash?
I would balance it just on the fact that I have been on the Planning Commission for just over a year and a half now, and I've only missed, I believe, two meetings. I'm committed to that because I said that I was going to be there for that and do my part. I also work full-time running a construction company, and I manage a handful of people underneath me and can juggle their schedules and make sure that we get to all of our jobs on time and finish in a timely fashion. So I believe that between the two of those, I think I can manage my commitment to this as well as being a leader out in the community and hearing what other people have to say.
Thank you. David, it's your turn.
I have time. I have all kinds of time. And if you want to talk to me, you might see me walking around down here on the low end of town, because I do spend a great deal of time walking around down here. I don't go down to the senior center very often because I'm walking. I suppose I should. They would like to see me down there. But as far as commitment to the community, I mean, I'm here. I've been committed to Bayfield since I moved out here. It was nineteen ninety-four that I moved out here. I was on the Planning Commission shortly thereafter. And I've participated in county politics, whether it's on the Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission over the years as well. So I have a breadth of knowledge that will serve the community well if they're willing to put me in a position to do so.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We appreciate the questions coming from this audience. That was, again, a question from this audience who's here live with us tonight. And the next question, we'll go back to a question that we received in advance from a member of the community through our online system. Oh, I'm sorry, Ashley. You still have.
I was wondering.
Yes, we would love to hear from you on the question.
Well, I've got four years under my belt. I've been doing it. So I like to tell people, you know, I, I'm on so many committees. I average sometimes twenty-two meetings a month, plus running two, three businesses. But somehow I figured it out. I have a system, and I just think it's so important to be at the table. I think you miss opportunities when you're not there fighting for Bayfield at some of these committees I sit on. But yeah, I've got a system and I've got it figured out, and I think my attendance record speaks for itself in the last four years.
Thank you. All right. The next question from the outside audience or the outside contributors to the forum tonight. Matthew, you will be responding first to this question. The question is, what experience do you have in bringing people with diverse, strong opinions to the table to resolve issues and move forward?
I think alone with my background in social work and having to deal with diverse families and also being on the Planning Commission and previous Board Commission, that I'm able to see everybody's perspective, listen to everyone and not make a rash decision, and then, you know, taking everything that I've learned and moving forward in a positive direction and looking at it like that, so I don't rush to any kind of rash decision.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
The people I work with in my day-to-day job, they're from every walk of life, and I like having a conversation with them, hearing what they have to say. I don't look at them and just think that they're wrong immediately. I like to hear what they have to tell to me, and I feel like I can learn a lot of things from everyone around me, so I don't like to just argue the point or just say my way is the right way. I like to hear what they have to say and take what they say and use some of it and then use some of mine and continue to grow as a person and as a leader that way. I don't like to, I don't like to just put people down and tell them they're wrong or force them into what I want to do. I want to have like a good dialogue, a good conversation, because it stimulates you and also it teaches you a lot about where you are and how you're going to continue to grow as a person.
Thank you, Cash. David?
As a board member, I find it really important to come to the table without any preconceived notions of where you might come down on an issue. It's important, in that respect, to listen to the community and the people in the room and take a measured approach to things and make a decision based on that. That's about it, really. I mean.
Thank you, David. Ashley?
So in my full-time day job, I would say that there's plenty of opportunity for conflict resolution. I own the local honky-tonk, so there's plenty of bikers, tourists, locals, cowboys. We have it all, every walk of life. So I have a really good experience there, but I will tell you, I have never missed an opportunity to go to a CML conference, and I tend to always go to the conflict resolution outbreak sessions. There's been some really valuable information coming from those conferences, and that's something I enjoy doing. So hoping to get back there next year and attend some more of these breakout sessions.
All right. Thank you. Laura, would you like to respond now?
Yeah, so I have only been in Bayfield for four years, but I come from Virginia. I'm a grad, I have a sociology degree. I'm a graduate of Leadership Loudon, which is like Leadership La Plata. I've been manager and director of several nonprofit organizations as well as profit organizations. I've been trained in mediation and conflict resolution. I love working with people. I have a very good talent for listening to people, and for some reason, I seem to encourage people to talk to me. People always tell me things all the time, and everybody else will say, nobody ever, she didn't ever tell that to me. I said, well, people talk to me. And I like to talk to them. I like to listen to everybody's opinion, get everybody's input, and then use what we can use, but let people participate in the process.
Thank you. And Matthew?
Oh, I thought I started.
Sorry, that's where you started. Sorry. All right.
You don't want to hear from me again.
In the interest of keeping things fair, the system gets complicated, at least for me. So we begin with Cash on the next question, and this is a question that comes from this audience tonight. Bayfield is known for its community celebrations, July Fourth and also Heritage Days. These events have costs for police, public works, staff, et cetera. The town has historically covered those costs. Should that continue, or should costs be shifted to event participants, for example, vendors, parade entries, park activity organizers?
Well, I think that could go both ways. Growing up here my whole life, my favorite things to do were to participate in these celebrations that we have here in this town because it is just so much fun. I like to see that the town does cover the costs of them because it allows for the people to come and just enjoy and really just have fun with that day. I also see that you could be asking for assistance through your vendors and whatnot to cover some of the costs and make it easier on the town for the budget and everything like that. But I like, I just like to see that the town would continue to do that, and then we could have, we could have a conversation about if we need to get into somewhere where we want to ask for help or ask for funding for some other way.
All right. Thank you. David?
That was a good question, and when it came up last fall, I know it caused a lot of angst amongst people. I, for one, think that the town should step up for the most part when we have these, the two key celebrations of the Fourth of July and sheep trailing. And those are the ones that draw people to our community. They're the ones that really I think the community is most proud of. And to that end, I think that the town of Bayfield should support those to the greatest extent possible and not require permits or all kinds of fees from participants. Let's make this a fun, fun thing. I mean, there are some things perhaps that you don't want in a parade, but on the other hand, let's have a fun parade. I mean, let's have a fun sheep trailing festival. It's all kinds of positive for the community.
Thank you, David. Ashley?
I mean, look, I'm, there's nobody that loves Fourth of July in this town more than me, but I, I was on that committee where we kind of had a chance to really look at what things were costing the town, and it was pretty eye-opening. And I will tell you, there had to be a solution. I do think that we have, there's a way to do this. We can meet in the middle. But permitting, I mean, insurances are required. If there's a beer garden, that is not on us. That is, you know, other people telling us that's how we have to run things. But I don't know if it's grant funding or pass it on to the vendors, but when we're having to pay our staff overtime and that, you know, we don't get, our sales tax money cannot go to operations, so that's the problem. If, if there's a solution to this, we need to go back to the voters and allow the voters to tell us how we can spend our money better. And then I think that helps to solve that problem of funding these events, because I would love to see more events in Bayfield, if anything.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, I really enjoy the events in Bayfield, and I think they're sort of characteristic of our small-town community, and I really enjoy them. I could see that, I can see where it gets expensive for the town. I would like to see some kind of compromise reached, I think, with some town, some town funding of the events and some from vendors and participants, because there are a lot of expenses involved with that. I mean, even buying fireworks is kind of crazy. So I would like to see, see the town open it up to some other ideas for some other ways that the citizens see that we can support these activities, because we all enjoy them. We love them. I love the sheep trailing, and it's part of our heritage, and I think we need to support those things. But maybe to find a way to share the expenses with the town would be great.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
I would have to agree with Laura. I think the two biggest attractions is the Fourth of July and the Heritage Days. And that's where we see the bulk of the people out, enjoying, vendors are out. And so I would want to think about talking with the town to, you know, funding some of those holidays and then looking at, because I know the block parties come into effect. And so maybe looking at those two, maybe giving a little bit more funding, but maybe going to the table and asking, you know, what exactly can be done? Because, you know, both those are a big draw, and I would love to continue to see people come to Bayfield and enjoy those, and I mean, so.
Thank you, Matthew. All right. This question will be directed for David to be the first one to respond. And it's a question that came from, or to the League of Women Voters in advance of this evening. Question is, what have you done to prepare for the elected office you are seeking?
Holy moly. That's really a terrible question, because of all the people up here, I'm as qualified as anybody because I have served as a board member on this board. I've served as a, as a Planning Commission member. I've served as a, served as a Board of Adjustment member. I understand the budget process as well as anyone. I actually read the budget. So yes, I'm prepared for this position, so.
Thank you, David. Ashley?
Yeah, I've been preparing for the last four years to carry on. My, my goal was to finish what I started here, and that there's a lot of projects I'd like to see through, so my plan is just to keep on keeping on if I'm elected. And if not, if the voters want to go a different way, I'll free up a lot of time and I'll just go out and have a life, so. Yeah, but my, my goal is to just keep on doing what I'm doing and forge forward.
Thank you, Ashley. Laura?
Well, I've been preparing to serve this town since I moved here. I, it is my life. This is my life. I'm retired now. I am prepared to learn more. I know that I do not know as much about Bayfield and the history and the Planning Commission. It's a lot of people that are up here to serve, because I haven't been here very long. But I have made a point of getting out and getting to know the people and trying to figure out what issues that people are concerned about. I spend a lot of time going out and visiting various people, meeting new people. I'm a people person. I'm intelligent, and I've got a lot of interest in doing this. And the things that I don't know about, I am very willing to go and find out and talk to the people that do know about it, so I can serve better.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
So I've maintained a relationship with the town since I was off the board in two thousand and twenty by being on the Planning Commission. I still stay involved with the seniors. I like to hear their voice, and I just like to go down and hear their stories and have a good time with them. I still talk with constituents out in public and listen to their issues and help to move forward to helping them resolve some of those. So in the last four years, I think I've been more involved than anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
Well, to prepare for this, it was the Planning Commission, and I was excited to join, but I kind of got thrown in, and it was a trial by fire. I didn't know much before I got there, and then I started to learn, and it was very interesting. And now I can say I've enjoyed like ninety-nine percent of what I have done on the Planning Commission so far. I, I mean, I just don't have the most experience. Before I started, I bet most of the kids in my wife's 4-H group knew more about the procedures and everything than I would have with all their meetings. But I've learned a lot, and I'm ready to just keep learning.
All right. Thank you, Cash. Next question will be for Ashley to begin. And this is a question that came up both with the live audience here and as well as a person who. presented a question in, in advance to the legal women voters. Putting those two questions together, the question has to do with growth in Bayfield. Bayfield has numerous subdivisions in the works to provide housing for more people. What efforts should the town make to provide more services to match these growing populations? One concern, for example, one service that's of concern might be water. Or should we limit growth? That's your question.
This is what I like to tell people about growth. I get this question a lot. I'm a firm believer that it's inevitable that we're going to grow. You know, we annexed a ton of property around the town, and I like to remind people that the property owners that had that property could have gone through the county and developed that property anyway. Our goal was to bring that into the town of Bayfield and grow it our way and make sure that they're up to our standards, make sure that we have enough water, make sure that our engineers have eyes on all of these processes. We have a really great staff here at town that works very hard and very diligently on looking at these projects. But like I said, it's inevitable that it's going to happen. If we don't annex this property into the town, it'll happen through the county where I worry about having another homestead where you have a serious water problem. So, I think if we take it on and we have our eyes on it and we have our crew on it, that's where you're going to see smart growth.
Thank you, Ashley. Laura?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. This question has to do with growth. Bayfield has numerous subdivisions in the works for housing more people. What effort should the town make to provide more services, for example, water, to meet the needs of these growing populations? Or, on the other hand, should we limit growth?
Well, I would be interested. I, I know that water is a huge concern, and I've got to tell you, I have to learn a lot more about water because it's not a concern in Virginia. So, that's a whole new world to me. But I do see it as a limiting factor to what's going on. I would be more interested in some controlled growth. As I said, I really, I want us to stay as a, a tight-knit community, not as a bedroom community for Durango or Pagosa. I think we need to, the, I think the big thing is encouraging more businesses. It implies, provides employment, and it provides, you know, people, reasons for people to stay here. You know, if they're going to live here in Bayfield, they stay here in Bayfield. They work here in Bayfield. And I would like to, you know, encourage that type of growth. I don't see it as just unlimited to just keep building more houses. We have to have more of the infrastructure to support that and for the people that already live here.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
So, I'm all about smart growth as well, and I know we have a lot of new developments coming in, and we do have, that, it's always a constant question, do we have enough water? Currently, we do have enough water to sustain our growth, but I think we still need to keep that in the back of our minds as Bayfield continues to grow. We have changed some water shares into potable water so that we have more water available. But, you know, the more rooftops, that does put a strain on it. And so, that's where I say the smart growth, and we continue to work with the developers and also stay informed with our public works director to know what our sustainable amount of water is because water is the key of life, and we need to make sure that we do sustain that for our small town because it's very important.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
I'm not for limiting growth, but I am for controlled and managed growth. I think that if we do it right and do it smart, that we will be able to prosper as a community and continue to move forward, bringing in what I've said before. Good jobs for teachers and housing and everything that goes along those lines. Being a builder and having a part in developing some of these places that have been going up in the past few years here, I, I would just encourage that we meet with the town and be in the town so we can go by their guidelines and make sure that it properly works within the community.
Thank you. David?
Typically, if something gets to the board, we've determined already that it's got enough water available to proceed. So, general, as a general rule, I'm not too concerned about Bayfield's water. We have a huge reservoir above us. We've just gone through a whole process of changing shares that have been agricultural shares to water that can be used municipally. I think that will be a big help. I don't know that, I mean, I'm certainly not for limiting growth, but, you know, growth has to pay for itself, and as developers come in here, it's going to be on, incumbent on them to, as to whether or not there's an adequate return on investment for them. You know, to that end, if the town can help in affordable housing, then, then we must do so.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then that's, we're on to the next question. And again, there had, there was a individual in advance who provided a question with some questions about the senior center and the voice of senior citizens in Bayfield. And there's also a person in this audience who submitted a question on those, along those lines. So, I'll put those two similar questions together this way. And this is to, for Laura. You'll be the first one. First of all, are you, each of you, are you aware of the concerns that were voiced last year by seniors regarding the hours, the billing, and the use of the senior center? In your opinion, have those issues been resolved? Are you going to support senior citizens and listen to our concerns and comments discuss?
Well, I am absolutely going to support our senior citizens and the concerns that they have. I am not terribly well-informed. I remember some of the controversy, but I wasn't involved in any of the discussion here in this, in this chamber. I think their concerns of the senior citizens and the senior citizen center are legitimate, and I think that we need to do more with the senior center. I think we need to have it open more hours rather than less and provide the other service. They do a great job there, I think, at the senior center, and it carries wonderful over there, but I, I'd like to see that expanded and continue to support our seniors because they've been here the longest. We have lots to learn from them, and I'm very much in support of them. And then finding other ways, different ways to support the development of the senior center and all the other services that we do have available here in Bayfield.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
So, yes, I'm aware of all the issues going on with the senior center over the past year, and I'm one of the biggest advocates for the seniors. I feel like sometimes they're not heard, and I like to go down and just visit with them and, you know, get, get their voice. And I feel moving forward that the senior center and the town can be productive, go hand in hand. I think it just is going to take a delicate dance to do it. But I see moving forward, I think we could do that.
Thank you. And Cash?
I'm not too informed on the issues that have been happening. I learned a little bit when I sat down to get my pamphlet signed so I could be on this ballot this year. But I do think that the town and the senior center should be able to work more closely together, and we should be able to listen to what the seniors have to say about that, hear their voice, and really think about what they're asking for, what they're telling us. I mean, they have been here the longest. They do have the most life experience, so we should definitely learn from them.
Thank you, Cash. David?
I'm well aware of the situation that the seniors have been facing down there over the past couple of years. I kind of agree with some of their concerns. Cost is always an issue. It really is. How that gets addressed, I mean, the county has to help us on this too because this isn't just a, a town issue by itself. This is a community issue, like many of the things that we have around here. So, we need to think in a broader sense in a lot, in a lot of ways as we move forward.
Thank you, David. And Ashley?
Yes, I'm very well aware of the issues, and I, I love when you come to meetings and voice your concerns. You know, unfortunately, there are rules. There are MOUs with the county. There's some things that we're trying to, to, to follow there. The other thing is, you know, our sales tax currently cannot support operations. So, extending hours, extending staff time, all of that costs monies to our operation budget. We did go after a sales tax increase that would have handled anything you wanted over there. It would have handled the rodeo grounds. It would have handled Joe Stevenson's park, and it would have taken care of Heritage Days. But it got shot down. So, I think we need to educate our voters and possibly go after another sales tax increase. That is my recommendation so that we can open up that senior center as often as you want.
Thank you. This question will go to you, Matthew, to be the first responding candidate. And it's, there's a, let's make this a combination of one of the questions from the audience here as well as a individual from, who provided a question in advance. Has to do with how to agree to disagree with others or have some other solutions. So, the question stated here is, how would you respond if you met disagreement within the majority of your board members? Or with an individual board member? How are you going to respond if disagreement becomes a difficult situation to handle? What if others disagree with you? What if you disagree with them? How will you manage to continue dialogue or valuable outcomes in the midst of the kind of disagreement that may come up?
That's a good question. I feel like I have good conflict resolution just being in my years of experience working with difficult families and also listening to their concerns before making a rash judgment. And I think that would also be on the board too because everybody has their own opinion, and I'm only one vote. And so, all I can do is express my concerns to other board members and say, "Hey, this is just how I see it." You know, we can, we can agree to disagree and have that helpful dialogue and maybe come to some sort of resolution because I think just talking it out and hearing their perspective versus my perspective and maybe come into some sort of resolution, and maybe the whole board's like, "Hey, I didn't think about that." So, it's just kind of not gauging or not shutting somebody down, to speak.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
Well, to respond to disagreement would, I mean, that's kind of the point of having the board of trustees is to have all these differing opinions so that way you can have a voice from every part of the community, essentially. So, handling the disagreement, it's just a matter of having a conversation about it and hearing what they have to say. And just because somebody has a differing opinion from you doesn't mean that they're wrong. You have to understand that you need to hear what their side of it is, and then hopefully they'll allow you to tell your side of it and then find somewhere in the middle that you guys can meet and work forward. It's, to me, it's not, doesn't seem to be that difficult. I deal with it a lot during the day at work and everything, so I would just continue to try to keep an open mind while I'm sitting up here.
Thank you, Cash. David?
Whenever a question is asked, there's always more than one, one answer, it seems. And the job of any board is to take all of the positions that are reflected amongst a variety of the members of the board and kind of try to meld those together into a position. And if it's done right, then we all vote with a consensus based on conditions of moving forward. However, if you have instances where you're unable to resolve your differences with the board, you just shine it on and move on because life is not always, always agreeing with everybody all the time. I mean, we do have differences, and we just have to learn to live with them.
Ashley?
I always hope that my board reads their board packets and they're well-informed of big issues before coming into it. I think a lot of times disagreements come from not quite having an understanding of, of the topic at hand. But, I mean, that's the glory of having seven of us up here. I'm not, I don't expect us to all agree on everything. But my big thing is I always want to know why. You know, if there's a no vote, I always kind of want to know the background and why you're feeling that way because I, I think it matters, and I think that it could help, you know, form opinions on another matter that comes up. So, but I, I have pretty good short-term memory. I, if, if we disagree on something, I tend to move on and on to the next thing. So, but that's why there are seven of us up here.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I'm pretty good at conflict resolution, too. For disagreements on the board, I think it's really important that everybody gets to express how they feel and what they think is important to the issue. And when there are a lot of disagreements, I would like to go back to the public, to the people that have elected us, and get some more input and some more direction from the people of the community. So, it's not just, you know, we're hearing our opinions between us on the board. We're representing the community, and I would, if there's a big disagreement, I would want it, oh, she cut me off too early. If there's a disagreement, I would like to be able to, I have the respect for anybody that would disagree with me. I would like to hear, you know, I want to hear their side, present my side, and then get some other input. If more than one person disagrees, if I'm only one, I move on. I'm good about that.
All right. Thank you. The next question, Cash, you'll be the first responding candidate. So, this question has a bit of specificity to it. This person says that there has either been some planning or maybe a lack of planning that has created three commercial centers in Bayfield. How would you address traffic issues while preserving the vitality of commercial centers in Bayfield?
The commercial centers, I'm assuming they're talking about that Hega property that's being developed. Well, one of the things about the traffic there is the town is actively working on getting another street light there, just at the corner, which would allow for an easier flow of traffic. It'll also slow the traffic down coming into Bayfield, which would help us, too. But, I mean, the town as a whole looks at each of these developments as they come in, and there are studies done to make sure that we can handle it traffic-wise, also for everything else that comes with these developments. I think the commercial properties are good. I mean, there's an opportunity for another grocery store or any other possible commercial thing. I mean, maybe Target or Walmart or something, you know, in the long run. Now, I'm not saying that we need to commercialize all of Bayfield, but it would be good to see some of those amenities coming in and helping our community in the long run.
Thank you. David?
I don't know if I view it so much as having three commercial centers as having one commercial center that's basically bisected by the highway and then having Mill Street, which is Mill Street. It's not really a commercial center. It's Mill Street. So, you know, we, I, I don't know that there's really an answer to that question. I mean, it's difficult to get from one place to another. I mean, we are trying to get a, a walkway across the road, and I think that's a good thing. But that's, there's, there's just not really much you can do. I mean, we're like Mankas. We're a bisected community. Blame the highway department.
Thank you, David. Ashley?
Yes, I agree with David. Unfortunately, our town is completely cut in half by a, a major highway, but I think- But I think we're putting some things in place, I, I mean, it's funny, there are people that are Southsiders and there are people that are Northsiders, and there are people that go to the Chevalos and people that won't cross over here to go to Tequilas. It's an interesting problem we have. But, um, we did receive some grant funding for the east intersection. I think that's going to help a lot of the, you know, getting around town. And we're also, we've received some grant funding for a pedestrian walkway. But it's a, it's not an easy problem to fix. I just think there are things that we can put in place to help the walkability and get around to our commercial centers.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I've got to say, I have never had any trouble getting around Bayfield, but I haven't been here for too long. I'm not really well qualified to answer that question. I would like to learn some more about it, um, get some more information. And when I learn more about it, I would have a whole lot more to contribute to that, to that question.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
Well, I'd have to agree with both David and Ashley about being bisected by the highway. But like the mayor has said, that we have received some grant funding moving forward and also working with the school district, because we're going to have to continue Oak Drive over there. So, you know, I really want to be transparent with the school district, because they're going to be an intricate process and all this, and we're going to need their input. So I just want to be transparent with them moving forward to, you know, get this problem solved. Because like, I don't want Northside, Southside, you know, we're, we're Bayfield, we're, we're a combined community. So I want to keep it as that.
Thank you, Matthew. Uh, David, this question will be yours for starting, starting this time. This has to do with the recreation facilities in Bayfield proposal. Uh, this, uh, comment came from someone in advance of this meeting. And they ask about the master plan for recreational facilities in Bayfield. They are interested or concerned that it was voted down at the last election and would like to know each candidate's opinion. Were you in favor of the plan? How could it be accomplished? Why do you think that it was voted down?
Why was it voted down?
Yes, and actually, there's one, let me, let me, I'm going to restate it, okay?
Okay.
Uh, a master plan for recreational facilities in Bayfield was voted down at the last election. Were you in favor of the plan? How did you believe it would be accomplished? Why do you think it was voted down? And were Colorado government funds considered for funding and should they have been?
The proposal, as it was presented, I was against. And I voted against it, because it was too expensive. And, uh, I think there's a better way of addressing that. Recreation is a, is a big issue here in the community. And quite frankly, as you think about recreation, I don't know that it's, uh, a Bayfield town issue specifically. It's a community-wide issue. And quite frankly, what I would like to see to address this is to have, uh, a, a recreation district considered. And if we had a recreation district, then the town could get out of this business and we could probably address this a little differently. Now, that doesn't mean that the town would necessarily get out of the owning facilities business. A collaborative effort with that, with the town and a recreation district would have to be, uh, undertaken in order for this to succeed.
Thank you, David. Ashley?
Uh, was I in favor of it? Absolutely. Um, I think we need more things for our community members to do, especially our kids in this town. We have outgrown our ball fields, we have outgrown our gyms. You know, why was it voted down? Because a tax question is never favorable, favorable on a ballot. But, you know, I, I will take a little bit of that. I think we were late to the game. I think we did not, we were too late getting that on the ballot and did not get the educational component out to the town. Was grant funding looked at? Yeah, but in a lot of those circumstances, you need matching grants. So I believe that we need to go back to the voters, educate the voters, what we could possibly do with that money. If you were going to Durango, you're already paying that sales tax, plain and simple. And, and you're, you're shopping there. So why not keep it here? Why not create the funds that we can go after matching grants and get this park project accomplished? That's, that's it.
Thank you. Laura?
I am not familiar with that particular, uh, issue when it came up for vote. I, I do think we need to improve the recreational plans for this area specifically. As Ashley said, we need some more activities for our young people, um, so that they are not running down to Ignacio or Durango to go to the gym or to go out and play. I think some more facilities, uh, if we could do a skate park, uh, bike area where they can ride, various different things. I think it's important. I just would need, once again, need to learn more about ways that we could get financing for it. Also, just increasing businesses increases sales tax and it gives us more money to work with.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
Uh, on this one, I, I'd have to agree with David. I'm more of looking at a rec district to alleviate the costs on the town and putting it on more people in the district, because we have like people in Forest Lakes that their kids would attend here, and they're not necessarily paying the fees. But if it was a district, then they're in the district so that they would be liable to pay those fees. So I would, I would kind of lean that way as well.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
Um, I was for it a hundred percent, especially having a young one growing up here now. It's just seeing it just be developed better than what we have currently for every spot in town. But I'm, I'm somewhere in between it being just strictly Bayfield or seeing that rec district. I think we can figure out something in the middle, possibly to alleviate the costs. Or like Ashley had said before, we just needed to educate our voters more, so they understood what it was actually going towards and the purpose for it.
All right, thank you. The next question is for Ashley to begin with her response. This is a question that came from a member of this audience. It's very straightforward. Is the town manager an issue in this campaign?
I don't think so. No, um, I mean, I was on the previous board, um, when we hired our town manager. And plain and simple, we, there were too many handshake deals going on in this town. There were things that were not getting done, things were not buttoned up, there was a lot of, there were a lot of things going on. And our, our goal was to hire a town manager that came in and, and just got the job done and did it right. And she came very highly recommended. I know she's probably ruffled feathers, um, but I don't care. I mean, things are getting done, they're getting done the right way, they're getting done legally. So, I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Laura, what is your response?
I have not been here too long. I do know I have heard an awful lot of complaints about the town manager. And, um, just basically hearsay though, is all I can say about that. It's mostly hearsay. My personal dealings with the town manager, I've never had a problem. But there are, I've just heard concerns and I know that that has been, I've heard a lot of concerns. That's all I could say.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
Um, I've, I've expressed concerns before, um, but the town manager did sit down with me and we were able to talk it out. And I think moving forward, my only advice would be, you know, maybe not to be so hardened and maybe listen to other people's concerns before such a decision is made.
Thank you, Matthew. Cash?
No, I don't think it's a concern. I've worked with her for a year and a half now and I really haven't had any issues. I've heard the hearsay, but none of it's come up with me, so I don't think it's any sort of concern.
Thank you. David?
I disagree. Uh, and with all due respect, uh, Katie knows, knows my position. I was, we were, we were forced to hire Katie. We didn't have, we didn't have, uh, a choice, because that was COVID. So has Katie done a good job? She has done a good job. And she has been professional. She has been polite to the board, but constituents say she's abrasive. And other people in, uh, other government organizations reflect the same, same thing. And so I'm kind of concerned about how our manager interacts with other professional organizations and other political organizations. So yes, I, it is an issue.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is the final question. We'll, you'll be responding to one more question and then it will be the time for you to do your closing statements. Uh, so it will ask Laura for you to respond first to this question. Broadly, what is your vision for the town?
I envision, uh, Bayfield being a agricultural center or focus for La Plata County. I see it as being very unique, uh, with its history, especially in this area, the agricultural history. I want, I want it to be a place where, when people come to visit this part of Colorado, that they want to say, hey, I want to go, I want to check out Bayfield. I want to stay in there in Bayfield and see what they're doing over there. Because it's a lot different than what we're doing in Durango or in Pagosa Springs or ski resorts. I want it to be a unique community based in the, in, in its history and attractive for people to come and visit and stay for a few days.
Thank you, Laura. Matthew?
I think my vision is, we know that Bayfield's going to grow. And just doing that smart growth, maintaining, you know, the great school system that we have. Cause I know a lot of people moved here originally for our school systems because of the high graduation rate. And I want to continue seeing that grow. But also be respective of how the citizens want to see Bayfield grow and still listen to them and take in their concerns. And together, I think we can, um, maintain a well-balanced plan moving forward.
Thank you. Cash?
Uh, my vision would be Bayfield to be a community that other small towns in the state of Colorado can look at. See that we're growing with education behind it, so we're not overgrowing our resources and everything like that. Uh, the school district to keep performing at its level, hopefully even can grow larger there as well. I want it to be a safe, tight-knit community, being the fact that I am raising a family here now and everything. And I grew up here and it was safe and you could let your kids go out and ride bikes all day long and just to the community and not have a worry in the world. But I want to see it to be a healthy community too, that's bringing in revenue to allow the town to grow and do these, um, community parties or block parties. And, um, yeah, that would just be for me. I would love to see Bayfield continue to grow excellent and show that it can be kind of a beacon for the rest of the small towns in this state.
Thank you, Cash. David?
It'd be nice if, uh, we could continue to grow in the fashion that we have. We have a nice, small-town atmosphere and it's really a great thing. One of the things that we could do perhaps though is, I see a real valuable piece of, uh, real estate in Durango that is occupied by Basin Co-op. And perhaps maybe we here in Bayfield could encourage Basin Co-op to, uh, move out here somewhere and help reinvigorate this community, because honestly, it is a destination. And perhaps, uh, they might give it some thought. But, uh, we have a wonderful community here and we ought to do everything we can to encourage, uh, it to remain the same. We have a strong sense of, uh, community, we have a good edu, uh, good school system here. And, uh, it, it makes for a real strong community. And it's nice to be able to walk around and block parties and things like that. It's just, it has the kind of feel that we want to maintain.
Thank you. Ashley?
Yeah, I agree. I think we all live here and we all moved here for the same reason, for that small-town vibe and for that safe feel, um, sense of community. So yes, I, I want to continue to, to see smart growth. I think we have a really good team in place, um, a viable business sector. I, I think we will lure them at some point if we can house employees. I want to be able to protect our agricultural heritage. We do, it's on our 2024 Outlook list to look into that and start protecting some of these surrounding farm areas. I would love to see a thriving Mill Street. I mean, galleries and restaurants, um, increased recreation as well. And then that, that whole safety factor, I think we've made some really good strides with our police department. Rebranding, hiring, uh, and having our guys out on patrol and getting out in the communities. So, yeah, that's where I see the direction of Bayfield going.
Thank you. It is now time to welcome each candidate to present their closing statement in reverse order of the ballot. So David, you will begin please, and we'll come straight back this way on, along the row.
Well, thanks again for the League of Women Voters hosting this event. And really, thanks all the people that showed up out here. It's, uh, very encouraging to see a, a completely full room of people, uh, wanting to engage in this process. I'm kind of saddened that there's not more people running for office. I think that, uh, running for office is one of the highest honors that anybody can have. I mean, it's, it's, it's America at its best. Only, you know, when it's all said and done, however, I'm just a board member. I'm one-seventh of, uh, total vote of a total decision that ever is, that's ever made up here. But, uh, you know, uh, my motivation for running is kind of to act as a fiduciary for the community and to be some institutional memory on the board. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Cash?
I do want to say thank you for everyone showing up tonight. I'm hoping that you guys learned a little bit about me and where I stand with everything here in this community and how much it actually means to me growing up here my entire life. I was a little nervous in my opening statement, so I kind of rushed through them, didn't really say anything I wrote down. But I was going to say, I've touched on a few times, I've been on the planning commission for a year and a half and I've truly enjoyed that. Um, I have a family that I'm raising here in Bayfield and I want to continue to see it a safe area where I feel comfortable having my family here in Bayfield. But, yeah, I just am excited to have the opportunity for this and I hope that, um, I presented myself well for you guys tonight.
Thank you. Matthew?
Again, thank you guys all for coming. It means a lot for us to see you guys out there. And especially, I appreciate all the good questions that you guys brought up and I hope we were able to answer those. But moving forward, I've been a longtime community member. I have a family that, you know, loves and is doing really well here. And I want to continue to see the community grow in a positive, well-managed process. And, um, I just, again, want to thank everyone for coming out, so thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I want to thank you all for coming out also. I have never run for any kind of political office before, so this is totally new stuff for me. I am hoping, um, to capitalize on my ability to interact with people, hear different opinions and be able to incorporate it into what we're doing for the town. I hope you will elect me and I can learn more and be a more productive member. If you do not choose me, it won't slow me down, because I will continue to be involved with the community in whatever ways that I can and support the opinions of the people that live here. I want it to be our town.
Thank you. Ashley?
Yeah, this is, this position is incredibly important to me. Um, it's something I've never taken lightly in the last four years. Um, I just want to say, you know, I, I'm super involved. I think it's so important to be at the table. There's been plenty of instances where I've been at committee meetings or some of the boards I sit on for the different regions and counties. And had I not been at the table, we would have been overlooked for funding, for grant requests. Durango would have snatched it up. And I felt when I first became active in this position, that Durango was getting everything. And I got so sick of being, feeling like the stepchild, you know, the, the ugly stepchild out here in Bayfield. But I think it's important to be present. Um, and, you know, I'm not done here. I, there's a lot I still want to accomplish. Um, there's a big list of things that we have going on. Like I said, this town is growing. We are not going to look the same in five years. I understand that. But I think that if we grow in the right way and we keep, keep, the fact that we love Bayfield and we love this community so much, I think we can all accomplish that as a board and, and continue to thrive. But, yeah, thank you. Thank you for all, for being here.
And thank you, all of you candidates, for your very thoughtful responses to these questions that came from your community. And it has truly been my pleasure to be your moderator. And it has truly been my pleasure to be your moderator tonight. Back to you, Lori.
So I actually want to turn the mic over to Dustin because I want to make sure that we do a little reminder about what you all need to do to vote for your slate. So Dustin?
So the county clerks, they're busy right now. They got a big thing coming. They got the presidential election coming, right? So we're doing an in-person voter center here at Town Hall. So it's going to be in-person voting. So come on in, bring your ID. It is only registered electors of the municipality of Bayfield. So that's the reason we're going to need your ID because we're going to check the voter list against the county. So it's April 2nd, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, right here in this room. We're going to have election judges running it because I can't, so. And what I always say, it's the people's election. That's why we have election judges because they're representatives of the people. And the more people we can get here, the better sample size we're going to have for this election. Historically, in-person elections get a lot less turnout than mail ballot with the convenience factor. But please spread the word for me. We're ready. We're prepared. We've got ballots. We're ready to go. We've got judges. Spread the word. Get everybody in here. Look forward to seeing everybody. 7 to 7, April 2nd. You can come into Town Hall here and I can issue you an absentee ballot. I have an application you can fill out. And you can issue, get it back to me before you leave. Yeah, I've already got them ready to go and I've already issued one. Yeah, you can just, yep, just come up to the window. I'll get you the application or I can get it to you now, tonight. Fill it out, bring it back to me. Just make sure the ballot gets back before the close of the polls on April 2nd. So if you mail it...
No, I'm going out of town on the 19th, so it's got to be like now.
Be a little dicey, so I would bring it in to me. We'll secure it in the box. Military and overseas have gone out as well, too. Those went out actually about two weeks ago.
Any other questions for Dustin?
Is there a way to get a notice out through the utility bills or something like that?
We have sent it out with the utility bills and the newsletter and we're actually going to take out three newspaper ads with the election flyers that we have out front. Because again, I mean, it's the people's election. I want the biggest sample size we can get. We'll be prepared for it. And I got some great election judges getting on board. So again, get the word out. The bigger the sample size, the more of the voice of the people's heard. I thought about that, yes. Anything else?
Well, thank you all so much. Thank you to our moderator and our timer. They made the jobs look pretty easy, but they're actually a little harder than it seems. So, and especially thank you to our moderator.
And thank you all for coming and thank you for your thoughtful questions and vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Oh, you already did it, okay. She told me to remind you. Okay, perfect.
You said something about sales tax can't support...